Good morning. And, uh, welcome to commission meeting for the nineteenth of March. Um, we'll start with our legends and Chief Vernon, will you lead us?
What is the life of the United States of America? To the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Uh, I don't see anyone from the assessor's office. You know, the same roots.
From any nest.
Okay.
And then I think there was one voucher in the website.
Yes, one voucher. And that was for all American fire equipment.
Is it? I guess my question was, is, is it just time to upgrade or replace their equipment? Is that what's going on with this?
Yes. Their permits are topping out. They have a ten year warranty on them or a ten year license if they're using them and they are topping out this year.
Yes, there, uh, it's time for them to be replaced.
Okay, all right. Well, I move that we approve vouchers and invoices.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion on floor to approve the vouchers and invoices. All those in favor?
Aye.
No one? Okay, passes. Alright, next. Have payroll. I'll motion to approve the payroll for three twenty-one.
My second.
Have a motion second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes.
We have meeting minutes from three twelve and Amy, Amy had sent me two sets for Armstrong Creek PSD's meeting on three five. And I edited the wrong one, so I'm not sure if she wants me to go forward with those.
Okay, they can wait.
Okay. So, I mean, they, they were fine to me, but I don't know what changes that she had made in the second set she sent me, so. Um, I move that we approve the meeting minutes for our meeting last week on three twelve.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Date settlements.
Move we approve.
I'll second it. I see nothing.
Okay, we have a motion second on floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I need the second page again. I didn't flip the page up far enough. This page, my bad.
So you need a new one?
Huh? I need the second page again. I was signing them the wrong.
There you go, man.
Oh, wait, there.
No, no, I got one for. I'm God.
Thank you. I was saying he was just flipping inside. Okay, um.
Community corrections grant and Teresa is here. If you have any questions.
Teresa. I'm on.
Do you have any questions for Teresa?
I, I don't. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Taylor?
Well, uh, is this, is this a grant we normally do? I saw there was a match in there from us. It was substantial.
What runs the community corrections program? So did you include your request this year?
Yeah. And then it reaches the match and estimate a word match, which is another percent for us right now.
Yeah, and I mean, we get that. It's kind of like an income, so. Cause they don't pay. Teresa might as well.
Yeah, come up to the microphone, please.
So, um, to put it bluntly, we ask for the moon and stars and they get, we get, so, uh, we ask for our complete and total budget. And our, we've been in operation long enough that our manual match is the thirty percent, so that's the, that's the thirty percent match, but. It's, we'll probably get substantially lower than that and we'll be glad to get it, I'm honest.
And they don't pay like personnel, personnel and most equipment and supplies, but not everything, so.
Sir, explain what you did.
I'm the director of the corrections and they report here, they're across the street. So, um, we operate mostly grant funded. The county is very generous with the budget every year, but. We have what operate in one main grant is the West Virginia Division of Justice Service Community. Justice and Community Services anyhow. You may, I just butchered that. Um, so it's a, it's a state grant. And that's where the majority of our funds come from. And we try to bring in enough revenue to eliminate any cost to the county. That's not always, that is what's happened, but it's very little amount of costs to the county because we use the grant funds and then our revenues weren't.
But we appreciate you being a, uh, service to the community.
I'm glad to be here.
You have any questions for John? No, I don't. Commissioner Taylor, you have any?
Just, this is accommodated in our, in our budget projections, right Ruth?
Yep.
Okay, then I move we approve it.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion second on floor. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
This one's here. How things been going with today report?
Good, business is good and, uh, which is. Well, to be honest, our referrals are good and, and the local system works with us very well, so there was a time that referrals weren't good, so.
Business is too good.
Yes.
Well.
I just hope and pray that it is something that affects on our job, but kind of be unwritten, but actual goal, we need to produce some of that cost and provide valuable services that these folks don't get otherwise.
Well, we appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Alright, um. Ruth, can we go down to number five, please?
Yeah, Matt is on the, and Angela has.
Morning, Matt. How are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good, good. Okay, Angela?
You want me first? Okay, so, um, I tabulated all the bids. The low bidder was Empire Salvage at eighty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. They had everything in their package, um, that they were required to have. Um, so on that, we're good. I think a discussion would need to be now. If you guys want to proceed with that. And the one thing that I think we might want to do is the State Historic Preservation Office, which with it being part of the historic, even if they don't require us to have a public meeting, I think maybe we should have a public meeting to get public input, one way or the other, whatever you guys decide.
I agree with the public meeting. It never hurts.
Yeah, I don't know if the State Historic Preservation, they kind of vaguely sent Amy some stuff, but I think just to we just scheduled one either during a meeting or whenever you guys, but I think now the question is do you want it down and what funding do y'all want to use?
Okay.
Is there any value to the same stone blocks?
I'm sure there are, if you can get them loose, yeah.
Without breaking them?
Yeah.
But does the contract, did the contractor not submit his? So the contractor that did get the low bid has done several in Princeton and Bluefield, and he basically said, I have a whole field of that stuff.
I have what?
A whole field of that stuff from different historic buildings in Bluefield and Princeton, so.
And nobody's interested?
Basically, that's what he felt.
Well, he, and he would say that being the contractor wanting to bid.
Right, but the bid was for complete demo.
Parting it out. It, it's like you buy a car and start selling the whole car. You park the car out and sell it for more than what the car was worth, the whole.
What about the Sheriff's Department evidence room?
They're going to have to move, there's a lot that you are, I could consider. There's pictures right there of everything still in the jail.
Yes.
Um, there's two that are, so I think, yeah, and then the sergeant clerk still has their stuff. When we started moving stuff three years ago, it's still there. There's file cabinets, there's stuff from.
We have the museum stuff.
The museum stuff, I don't know who it belongs to. Yeah, and then there's a whole lot of trash.
Yeah, there's.
Quite some time ago, back fourteen plus years ago, um, there was an opportunity for the jail to actually be preserved and taken care of, but it was never done. Um, to give you an idea, this is the engineering and environmental report on that jail. Um, it tells everything about it. And unfortunately, everything that holds the jail together is crumbling and falling. Um, we could, we could have a, a block ball down on the car at any time because the condition that it's in. Um, if we were to have it fixed, it would be very exorbitant, you know, seven to ten million dollars to try to repair that, to bring it back to life. And unfortunately, at, at times, you know, we got to make a tough decision. And some of the things that are in there that's happening, um, there, there's no way it can be saved. Um, I actually have asked that our environmental engineer, uh, Matt Ford to be on the line with us to answer any questions in case anybody has them, but it, it's just a building that's in very bad shape. So is anybody having questions for Mr. Ford in Greenbrier Environmental?
I think he ought to just summarize those findings that he provided us. I mean, you know, just bottom line, everything bad that could be found in the jail was there.
Yeah, that was, that's a great summary.
But he can be specific about which bad things, I mean.
Matt?
Yeah, so we, uh, we did a structural assessment and asbestos, uh, inspection, lead based paint inspection, a mold inspection and a radon inspection and, uh, to Commissioner Taylor's point, um, everything was bad except for the radon, so. The good news is you build something back there, you don't have a radon issue.
Yeah, there was radon, there just wasn't enough, right?
Well, actually, it was all, it was all non-detect, so, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, the, uh, the structural engineer, the, the major issues, I guess with, with the, the roof leaking, um, and the, the jail is, is the structure of the jail is the jail cells and, uh, the steel structure that makes up the, the jail and then, um, the rock facade has actually separated from the frame of the building, which is the jail cells. Um, so the concern is, um, that at one point, uh, you can tell where work was done to fill in the cracks. Those cracks have gotten larger. There is some stone missing, so, um, the engineer's concern was a significant portion of one side of that whole wall of the jail could, could fall, which would, you know, that would be catastrophic potentially. Um, in terms of asbestos, um, there was asbestos throughout the building and, uh, boiler insulation, window glazing, uh, the floors. And, um, yeah, that was the items that had asbestos. Lead based paint, um, was on the uh, various features, doors, door frames, uh, the ceilings. If you go in that jail, you can see where all that paint has, has peeled. Um, and that's a good indication of, of, of old lead paint. Uh, so there's lead paint throughout and then there were extremely high levels of mold. Um, the worst was uh, on the third floor and we're assuming that's where the roof leaks and, you know, when you have water, you get mold. Um, the concentration was, or the spore count was one hundred and fifty thousand. And, uh, the recommendation, let's see here. Anything over seventy-five thousand is extremely high levels mold and it was at one fifty, one hundred and fifty thousand, so. Um, but yeah, so mold.
And that's airborne, that mold.
Yeah, that's airborne. Um, there were some samples, uh, one, one white sample that we took um, in the basement and it, it had mold growth off also, but yeah, on the third floor, that's an airborne issue, so. Yeah, asbestos, lead, mold and the overall structures and issues, so. That's the summary.
Okay, thank you, Matt. We appreciate it. Appreciate what you did.
And if you need me to attend a public meeting, I'd be glad to. That way I can help interpret the reports.
Yes, that would be great.
Alright, thank you. Uh, one, one other thing, and I, I'm going to tell the people Fayette County out there that we haven't made a decision to remove this jail. And there is another entity out there that reached out to me that says that they would like a look at this jail to see if it can be saved. We're open to all suggestions. We're not, we haven't made a decision. Our minds aren't closed. But it seems to me it's an uphill fight. But we will, they will be invited to the meeting to this group and they will be invited to give their input of what they think can be done with the jail too.
I think the, I think the main issue is that whatever's done, it has to be done fairly quickly because the jail is a hazard as it is.
Yep, that would be a priority, yes. Okay, and as far as paying for the demolition, uh, the money will come out of coal severance fund. We do have a REAP grant. Um, that will be used for, um, tearing down houses. Um, right now, there's a huge question on tearing down commissioner buildings on it. And I didn't feel right using that grant to tear down the county's jail, so we will be using coal severance funds for that tear down.
Well, well, I mean, unless we don't have enough REAP applicants and we have money left, it has to be spent out of that account. I think that needs to be considered.
Okay, well, we'll cross that bridge. Cross that.
What's the issue with using that money for demolition and disposal of county structures?
So the, the REAP people, the main focus, um, I had requested when we had discussed the jail and I had asked them what they needed from us, I basically got a verbal of it has to get approved through somebody else. They're more focused on residential houses. It wasn't official, you can't, but it was, uh, the money should be spent on residential.
Okay, so this came from the REAP people, not just us.
Right, this was a REAP thing. There was the jail and then there is a school in Cannleton. The property owners came to me because they bought it, um, and they were going to use it for a garage and REAP basically told me commercial structures have to go through another level of interrogation, basically.
I see.
Yeah, not, not you guys a REAP thing.
Okay.
Alright.
So do you want to award the bid?
Yes.
And I can.
Ending your decision, actually, Terry.
Yeah, and I'll reach out to the contractor. I mean, they understand that it was a bid and that it may or may not happen, so I'll reach out and tell them that.
Okay. So I'll motion to approve the bid at eighty.
Two, eight eighty-four fifty-eight, eighty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents to Empire Salvage.
Going to Empire Salvage.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, going on to number two.
That is the encumbrance criteria for REAP.
Angela? Actually, it's Anthony. Um, so basically my thoughts, given a lot of thought on this and tried to come up with some ideas that will work in the context of trying to get our residents on board with us destroying and disposing of dilapidated structures. And part of that is based on the, at some point, we got an email from John King, um, with the DEP outlining his thoughts. Um, we had discussed at a prior meeting that I think a lot of what is in his email is not practical. Um, my suggestion would be that we simply ask the property owners to sign an agreement that they will maintain the property subsequent to demolition and disposal by keeping brush cut back and keeping grass trimmed or cut. Um, the other practical, um, limitation that we can impose, and this is something I know the commission in the past has indicated they're not receptive to, but the other suggestion in Mr. King's email was that we uh, place a restriction on the property preventing the person from immediately turning around and selling the property right after the demo and disposed. Um, as a practical matter, um, like I said in the past, the commission has indicated, the commission has indicated that that was not something that they were receptive to. So I, I don't know whether the commission's position on that's going to change, but, uh, that would be my suggestion in terms of um, ways of addressing this concern about encumbrances. Um, I've ruled out. I, I mean, the reality is, is if we start asking people to place a lien on their property, my guess is, is we are going to have no one that is willing to, uh, go through the program.
So I, I agree.
Well, go ahead, Allison.
I was just going to say is, but one of the things you were going to look into was whether that is a requirement of the program. I mean, I think my interest is in requiring the least we have to, to get people to cooperate to get their homes torn down, so. If we're not required to seek an encumbrance, then I don't think we should. And, but, but I wanted to know what you found out about whether that was a requirement or whether that was just that one individual's thoughts on the matter.
Well, I tried to get hold of Mr. King a couple of times and he's not called me back, so I can't, I can't shed any additional light. I mean, the way his email um, is worded is that REAP, under the requirements of the REAP grant, there has to be some kind of an encumbrance, but the terms of that encumbrance could be as limited as requiring the property owner to keep the property maintained. Now, as we've also discussed in the past, enforcement of that encumbrance is I, I mean, I really don't think it's going to be an efficient use of Angela's time to drive around Fayette County, um, spring, summer and fall to check to see if the property owner is abiding by the agreement. I mean, we can, we can enter into the agreement, uh, with the property owner and periodically check to see if there is compliance. Uh, but the other thing to keep in mind is the only way to enforce a violation of that agreement would be to file suit. Um, and to get an injunction directing them to comply with the agreement. So that's, that's another consideration, but, but my guess is, like I said, any any suggestion to the property owner that we are going to require a lien equal to the amount of debt, equal to the amount of the cost of demo and disposal is going to be met with significant resistance would be my guess, and, and I understand that, uh, people are not going to be receptive to participating in the process if they have to encumber their property because simply broaching that subject with most people about placing a lien on their property is going to elicit a negative response. Well, and, and I, for our previous meeting and our conversation, I think we were on the same page and that's what we were saying. If the encumbrance is, uh, uh, that we decided to place on, on this is done by the commission, that it wouldn't be the REAP program that would re- require the encumbrance, it would be us, and that we would require an agreement. And that would, where you came in to sign an agreement. We would not go through the REAP program to get the money back. We would go through your office. If someone agrees to this, they have entered into a contract with the commis- commission to abide by the contract and that would open up your office to be able to more efficiently pursue. And the reality is, um, I mean, you, you know, of course, if somebody doesn't comply with the agreement, I certainly can send a letter.
Sure.
Um, threatening litigation if they don't comply with it. Um, but the, you know, the first step in that process is going to be figuring out whether or not the property owner is complying with the agreement, which, like I said, Angela, I think probably. I, I wasn't, I wasn't going to suggest that that be part of Angela's responsibilities, but, but, but the reality is, is the only way we're going to know if the agreement's being complied with or not is for somebody to drive by the property, put eyes on it and, and let us know what, what the situation is. Well, I don't think it's an insurmountable amount of people that have, uh, applied for the, the grant, uh, or the, the, the money. So we could probably work that out. We could come by and periodically check to make sure everything's okay.
Yeah.
And, and we could do it in a collective, uh, manner. It doesn't all go on your shoulders. And I don't think we're going to put this on your shoulder.
Um, I will say, and I reached out to Mercer County last week because I was looking at people who got money and asking, and Mercer County has gotten several billions. So they obviously are doing, all they do is they do a same voluntary agreement like you did in the past. And at the bottom it said, I will maintain my property.
Sure.
That's all, and they, that's all their encumbrance is. They have no other liens. They just had it in their voluntary agreement.
And what is, what's the commission's position on restricting the property owner from selling the property subsequent to the demo and disposed, and demo and disposal? I mean, I, I will certainly defer to the commission on that as I'm obligated to do, and I know the commission has been, uh, reluctant to do that in the past. Um, and the reality is, there again, imposing that kind of a restriction very well may push property owners away from wanting to have their property dealt with, but, but also.
I think the purpose of this program though is we're trying to clean up the dilapidated housing and, and hopefully spur new homes to go into these locations. So if somebody cleans up the land and sells it to somebody who wants to build a home or something there, to me, that's, that's an improvement. I mean, we're, we're cleaning up the mess little by little. And I, you know, I don't think there's a reason to put that, that kind of encumbrance. I think my biggest concern about these properties is that they not become junk storage for somebody, you know, once they get stuff knocked down or something like that, that all the old cars or, you know, things that they don't want on their primary property end up there.
Well, we can, we can actually be more specific about maintaining the property by including a prohibition on the storage of personal property on, on the, on the parcel at issue. Uh, and just for discussion, i- if we would put into place an encumbrance of if you sell the property within a certain period of time, then the, the, the money that was given to them to be paid back could be enforced. And I don't see a problem with that because if we have used state funding to improve property that increases value that the property owner would prosper from, should he not be, or she not be, uh, responsible for the gains? And, and for the demolition?
In theory.
Mind you of, if we have a, a lot that's a hundred and fifty by a hundred and it costs us twelve thousand to tear down the house, if somebody is willing to pay twelve thousand or more for it, that means they're going to put something else on it, and I don't have an issue with that. Well, the, but the other, um, Commissioner Fournette, the other issue though with your suggestion is how to make that enforceable. Because well, but my guess is, as soon as I present a contract to a property owner that says if you sell your property in this timeframe, you've got to pay us back, my guess is we're going to have a um, a lack of interest from the property owner to proceed.
Even if, you know, I, I, I like Greg's idea in theory. I think that one of the things that we're going to run up against there is the nature of this funding is REAP and that is from the ARPA money and it has to be spent by a certain amount of time. So if they were to pay it back, then we're going to end up giving it back to the government, like nobody's going to get it because if it's not spent in X amount of time, then it drops dead, basically. We can't reallocate it because allocation time ended at the end of last year. So I, I, in general terms, like I, I get where he's coming from and I, and I agree with it, but I think with this particular source of funding, we're going to struggle with the consequences of doing something like that.
That would be a mitigating circumstance that we would have to consider because, yes, we would have to give the money back to the state of West Virginia. We could not keep it reallocated.
And it's federal money too.
Yes.
Back to the US government.
Right. I don't think they'll let.
Well, a- and I'm not strong on that. I mean, I like the encumbrance of you keep the property clear, you keep the property, uh, presentable. And not use it to store. And not use it to store.
And not, not use it to store. I, I agree with Ms. Taylor and and your uh thoughts of not using it for a junkyard, not using it to, to put things in, just. Junk it right back up. You got everything done. You want it and you've got to jump again.
But we can, I'll certainly make sure that that gets added to the agreement and we can start moving forward then. Um, you guys vote on.
Yeah, we will have to make a motion and vote on it.
Okay, so I move that we. Haven't any suggestion of the encumbrance being. No trash put back on the property, no personal items. And maintaining the property after the property has been disposed of correctly.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Bruce.
Celebrate.
So basically. Where we are with the, I, I don't need to go over the celebrate software again. I'm, I'm sure the commission remembers what that's all about. So, um, the problem we are having at this point is Nicholas County. Notwithstanding the fact that they represented to us, they were going to immediately contribute. Uh, the latest information that we have received from Nicholas County is. Um, they are not going to contribute. Um, in the immediate future. Uh prosecutor in Nicholas County, Paul Williams, is going to be asking the county commission. For five thousand dollars to pay toward celebrate. Um, unfortunately, based on what Mr. Williams has represented, that money's not going to be available until. Uh, July first at the start of the new fiscal year. As far as financial commitments from any of the other interested parties, the only interested party at this point that has. Agreed to provide financial support is the Oak Hill Police Department. Um, the Oak Hill Police Department's proposal is to. Uh, provide the training necessary to their, their crime scene investigator to be proficient in the use of celebrate. They will also provide. The um facilities to store the phones and to utilize the software. They will provide hardware and or commun- um and or computer equipment necessary to use celebrate. And then, of course, if trial testimony is necessary, their employee, their crime scene investigator will. Um, appear in court as needed uh to provide testimony. Um, one of the things that I think probably needs to happen, I know Commissioner Taylor in the past has. Um, requested that this become part of someone's budget, which I think is an excellent idea. One of the problems we're dealing with is the renewal date is the end of March. Um, and of course, when this was brought to my attention, it was after everyone had already submitted their budget proposals for the upcoming fiscal year. It would make sense to push the renewal date back. To July first, so that the renewal date comes at the start of the upcoming fiscal year. Um, but at this point, and I believe uh Sheriff McMullen has indicated he was willing to include a provision in his budget. Not for the upcoming fiscal year, but I believe for the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year to cover the cost of celebrate. But in the meantime. At this point, um, if. Basically, at this point, for this to go forward, the county commission would have to allocate. Thirty-five thousand dollars to cover the subscription for celebrate. Um, I suggested that assuming Nicholas County comes through and approves. A contribution of five thousand dollars that if, if they approve that, when that money comes available on July first. That money be paid to the county commission to reimburse the county commission. Um, but at, at this point, um, no other agencies have expressed a willingness to provide. The funding to cover uh the cost of celebrate. The task force is in a position where because of, you know, they get their funding primarily through the federal government. Um, I mean, it's in part funded by county and local uh entities. Through the fact that, that the employees of the county commission in Nicholas, I'm sorry, in Fayette County. Um, employees of Oak Hill, employees of Somersfield Police Department are working for the task force. Um, so the manpower is actually paid for locally, but their. Funding for equipment and investigations comes through the federal government. And basically, they have been told not to expect. Um, not to expect an increase in funding and there's a very real possibility from what. Um, the, the coordinator has told me that they're not going to get. Uh, any additional funding and their funding very well may end up being cut when the. When the fiscal year begins, and I think the federal fiscal year begins, I forget the exact date, but I think it begins in the fall. So at this point, um. The only commitment we have is from Oak Hill, it's from the Oak Hill Police Department in the form of. Um, providing their employee and providing the facilities and equipment necessary.
What'd you say the total was?
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
All right, and the Nicholas County is a maybe in July. And Oak Hill is in a, in kind donation. They're gonna provide, yes, okay. Um, the, 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 the statement you made about it expires in March, but you said push the renewal date back to July first. We're, we're in a new fiscal year. Would that be just let it expire, do not renew until then?
Um, in speaking with law enforcement, I don't like the idea. None of us like the idea of doing without celebrate for a three-month period. So my suggestion is going. And we, we looked into whether celebrate would let us pay monthly. And basically they won't. It's an all or nothing. You either pay the full year or you don't, you don't get to utilize the software. My thought process was to delay the renewal by one month. And then next year, delay it by one month, and then next year, delay it by one month. Until we eventually get to where the renewal date is July first. Um, so essentially, we would be without it. For roughly a one-month timeframe each year until we push it back to July first and. You know, that's a proposal. I don't know that if, I don't know that we're gonna actually.
Anthony.
Yeah.
Why don't we just get the numbers from celebrate to, to do this subscription through July first and next year? And then we'll just start the budget process instead of these delays without.
You mean ask them if we can do a fifteen month? Well, I'll see if we can.
Yeah.
But I, I, again, I don't know if they would be willing to, I, I'll look into that. I don't know if they'll be willing to let us to do that or not. Um, I mean, I was told that month to month was, was out of the question, but it, it would seem. Logical to me that they would give us, if we were willing to pay, um, additional money.
Yeah, just tell them we wanna line it up with our, yeah, just tell them we wanna line it up with our fiscal year and we'd like to extend this contract for an additional three months. At the beginning. And, and then after that, we'll, we'll renew on an annual basis like they're accustomed to, but that we need to line it up with our fiscal year.
And I think that would be, that would be helpful for everyone uh concerned. Because obviously, the, you know, the budget proposals for the upcoming fiscal year are submitted roughly five months in advance. So that, that would be helpful.
Okay, so it's, until we can get that information, I would uh like to make a motion to move this. Until our first meeting in April.
Uh, the subscription expires at the end of March, I think.
It expires March twenty-eighth. Um, the first meeting in April, I think, is April sixth.
Second, second.
Um, what do you think, Anthony? What do you think?
We had, we had a lapse in the subscription last year. Um, I don't remember, it, it was less than a month. I mean, I don't see an issue with waiting until April second.
Okay.
We were basically talking two days.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Uh, three days in March and then two days in April. A, a five-day lapse isn't going to. Uh, five-day lapse isn't gonna uh cause us any significant issues. But in the meantime, I'll see if celebrate would be willing to give us a fifteen-month. You know, and one of the problems we're dealing with is. At this point, celebrate's the only game in town. And they have increased the annual subscription fee significantly. Since the time I've been in office. I mean, I, I don't remember the exact number, but it was, it was in the low to mid twenties. When I first took office and they had jacked it up every single year. And, and the problem is, is they really don't have any competition. So they're in a position where they can basically charge.
Right.
What the market will bear. And, and the problem is, there are. They have different packages, but the less expensive package. That they offer, of course, diminishes the capability of the software.
Anthony, Anthony, I think, I think we're, we support the software. We just want a good number to get, to get you extended through July. Included in the budget next year.
Once you have a lapse.
And there is a motion on the floor.
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Okay, um. We're uh, we're past nine thirty, but uh there's only nine chiefs here. Is that correct?
There are several on Zoom. There are some.
Some online also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why don't you start getting those pulled up? Ruth, let's go ahead and, and get this budget approved really fast. Okay, so, um, here is the county budget. We have completed it. Um, nothing on the firefighters. It comes out of a different budget, so it won't be on that for the firehouses. So at this time, um, any questions for Ruth?
No, I don't have any questions. I think she covered it sufficiently last meeting.
Yes, definitely. Um, I'd like to thank you and your staff. For uh, for doing that. Um, Commissioner Taylor, do you mind if we have you stamp, if we stamp your name?
No, I don't mind, but there is, um, there is the one salary that I wanted to um make a motion for.
Oh, we don't need to stamp?
Yeah, when will you be back, Allison?
Hmm, between the twenty-sixth and thirty-first. I haven't decided yet.
You can check with the auditor's office, because this is just for them to check it. Now, the one in April, we can't stamp. So I'll ask if we can stamp. If not, you'll have to come back before the twenty-sixth, or we won't pick your name on them.
Or you can send, he sends it back.
Well, with our mail service and die-gets, it will get lost.
Just a suggestion.
So at this point, I will make a motion to approve our budget.
Hey, John.
Yes.
Well, she has a question.
I, yeah, I had wanted to.
I'm sorry. That's right. It's to you. Go ahead.
I, I had wanted to, you know, we had accommodated some staff raises in that budget, but it, it's time. We didn't give Ruth a raise last year and I'd like to move that we increase her salary uh by five thousand a year.
I'll second. We have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Now you gotta do that paperwork all over again.
Yeah.
Welcome to the club.
Actually, we have extra in our budget, because we're getting filled positions.
Yes, we do. We, we have been very conservative with our budget, unlike some other counties and municipalities. Okay.
Appreciate your hard work, Ruth.
All right, so there is, there, there's another motion on the floor to approve the budget as presented. For uh July twenty-third or July one, twenty-twenty-five till June thirty, twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Good job, Ruth.
Thank you. Sign all these now.
Uh, no.
We'll sign that. We've got, we've got several people here.
Okay, um, moving on to, thank you. Moving on to the fire department budget presentation.
Would, would anyone like to, to speak for the fire department? I mean, do you, you wanna do this with sixteen people? Does?
Yeah. No, I just, you know, I just wanted to hear from the chiefs because they, it's their budgets and I wanna hear. You know, they, some of them I have questions for, so I just wanna. Hear from them.
All right, and, um. Like I said earlier, that budget isn't due until later. So we're just gonna listen to everybody's budget today, budget requests, no decisions that we make. Okay, so who's the, uh, the first fire department would like to go?
Would like to go. John, John, Mr. Vernon.
Chief Station, Station two, is that what it is? Station two, Station three.
I just called it Fed Bill. I never could add.
Okay, I've presented basically the same budget as I did last year. If you look through there, um. This is based, I did not base it on an increase for inflation like I did last year. So the inflation has kind of steadied out. Uh, the two things that weren't in the budget were. One was again, the Chiefs pay, which has never been in our levy budget before. And was not again this year. And the other was a capital outlay for a building, which would be twenty-two thousand dollars. I just got a new quote on that, which would be to upgrade our alarm system in our station. To where it would actually communicate with the nine-one-one center, which it won't. It won't properly communicate now. It gives a trouble alarm instead of an actual alarm if we do have a smoke detector or something for it all.
What was that cost?
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
And it's to upgrade what, chief?
The fire alarm system. We have. The uh panel we have in our station now is so old that it will not communicate with the nine-one-one center. If, if we have a smoke alarm go off or our sprinkler goes off, it transmits a trouble alarm instead of an actual alarm. And it's so old, it cannot be upgraded. So it needs a whole new panel. And to upgrade some of the uh smoke alarms to meet the current standards according to uh, where, who is our consultant. Those are the two main things. Everything else is based on our actual expenses from last year.
Okay, so you requested one seventy-eight, four eighty-five. And then the twenty-two thousand on top of that and.
No, the, the twenty-two thousand is part of that.
Oh, it's part of that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay. Thank you very much. That was painless. Who wants to go next?
Gonna be a long day. We'll start picking you off one by one. Boomer?
Yeah, boomer.
The only thing we really added to ours is, one, we have a big expense on capital outlay for our truck payment that's due in August. Um, we're also out to bid right now for construction for additional, our fire station that's been spoken about before here. Um, we are looking at using more of our estate for that and then using our levy for the furnishings once the vision. The addition is not for inside. Um, and then we're looking at purchasing some battery-powered tools for our um engine that we bought a few years ago.
What, what type of battery-powered tools are you?
Uh, I think it's the TNT, yeah, the TNT and then the Milwaukee.
Is, is that compatible with other fire departments' battery? Um, replacement or, or the?
I'm not sure what the other departments have, but I think they're all pretty much about the same.
Um, and, and, and you guys are more familiar with this than me, but I mean, I understand. I have DeWalt and I have other things. If you've got a, a Milwaukee and you've got a DeWalt battery.
They don't match.
They won't match. And, and I would, I would like to see the fire departments get on, because you use battery-powered equipment, you wild it. And when you get into an emergency situation, maybe some have, maybe some don't. You run out of juice, you need help, the other departments can help you. I would like you to think about that. This is what I'd like you to think about. I think y'all are moving toward that step. Where everybody gets on the same page, we're all using the same thing, it's all interchangeable. And then you can sort it out back. At the end of the day, whose is what? And that would be, I think that would be, because these battery-powered equipment, y'all wanna carry them. Sometimes you might have to carry them a mile, mile and a half into a, a scene. And, and you guys are smart enough and y'all, y'all know what you're doing. So I think you're already moving toward those steps and I appreciate. So I think you're already moving toward those steps and I appreciate it. But anyway, let's try to get together on on what we're buying.
Uh, the concerns I have on on something like this, I heard um. Something about construction and bids. The the way the process works now is that. The fire chief would need to come to the county commission and explain the need. And in this case, I guess it's for a new new building for you guys and then the county. In addition to your fire department.
Yeah, we've not had any um upgrades or anything else to our departments since probably the eighties. Um, the only office space we have is a desk sitting bef- behind a fire engine at present. So we're actually putting in like a meeting room area, another apparatus bay. Um, an office space and also have it set up once we get everything set and done, have the generators put into work and also be. A shelter if need be, if we can open up as a shelter area.
Okay, and. So do you have plans and everything for the the, because. These days for something like this, the county commission was is going to bid those kind of things out. And we have to select the bidder, the bids in a public meeting. This isn't something that the fire station should be doing for themselves. Because these are high uh expense items. And if they're over fifteen thousand dollars, then there's something that we need to vote on and and bid. So we would need um to see the plans and and have a. A draft write up so we can bid it out, and we'd have to also, you know, prove that that's something that. You know, we wanted to allocate funds toward.
As far the main part of the construction itself, we're actually planning on using our state insurance funds for that. Um, and then just using our levy funds for the furnishings inside. Tables, chairs, office things, things of that nature.
Okay, yeah, then we wouldn't need to be involved in that bid process if if you're using your state funds for it. But we would need to, if you think those. You know, what do you think the um cost is going to be for to furnish everything?
We haven't even gotten that step yet. Um, we're not expecting it to be super high, um tables, chairs. We're going to move the desk that we have into the office as one we currently have, will be moved into the office. Um, so then, you know, we're putting a kitchenette in, so those things, appliances wise there.
Okay. Well, that's that sounds reasonable to me. Just just as a heads up, you know, as you get the information you need, just keep us as surprised as possible. You know, as you go along, so we're not surprised when you come in with, you know. Need a need for reimbursement. If you get our approval in advance, if it's over fifteen thousand, then you're going to be covered. Okay, was there anything more from Boomer, chief?
No.
No, I have nothing. Not this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Let's get me following you next. Mr. Purdue.
Oh, yeah.
Montgomery.
Uh, on my budget. Uh. Different from last year's radios and communication, in case the AFG grant don't go through, we're going to have to buy radios.
How mu- how much are radios?
The ones we're using now are about three thousand dollars a piece for a portable radio.
Those are Motorola?
Kenwood's.
You got Kenwood's? Okay.
And I think Kenwood's cheaper, correct?
Definitely.
Quite cheaper. And then uh I do have. And this is in the very early stages, but uh. In the process of acquiring a piece of property that should be donated from Bridge Valley to us to look at building a new station. Uh. It's in Canal County, so. Obviously, I wouldn't be using any funds. Uh. On Fed. Uh, want to try to write some grants and uh. In the uh. In the past. I don't believe it was in the. That we could use uh levy money for salaries. So I did put. That in there this year to try to start as an incentive paying per call. To try to get more people out. But that's the change of mine.
What what are you planning to do with the old building?
It's the city's. I think they plan to get some. For a trash department, so. And it's a fifty year old building. That's issues.
You you said you need radios. Is that the twenty thousand?
Yes, that that's it, the AFG grant that was written for the county, don't go through.
Okay, so I'll consider that a heads up, and then if it doesn't come through, you know, you can come back to us. And request those.
We're, the county is currently pursuing other avenues to to provide the fire department with uh. Up to date radios. I I as I understand, your radios are obsolete. You can't even buy parts for your radio right now. If you break an antenna, it's done unless you have a radio that you're scavenged from or cannibalized. Um, you can't fix your radio. So what can I ask you a question about, Montgomery? The the fire, the tire down there that uh we we run analog off of, is that something that's being dealt with right now? I mean, that's state. I know it's state.
State radio. What? Been four years? There's, we still don't. Get an answer of what's going on. I mean, it's been a several counties. I we've heard and.
Material.
They're all sitting there. They're on the ground, but nothing being worked on.
So what you're saying is the state has everything to upgrade this radio tower. For you guys to go digital, is that right? Because you guys are currently uh operating analog. And that the materials are laying on the ground and nobody's doing anything. It's kind of like a forgotten project. What Philip Vouts? Pat, what Philip thought? So Jack, Jack Kincaid is on on this to maybe get uh uh some answers. Is that maybe who we should go to? Because if we upgrade these radios, they're going to be a significant amount. I mean, we're looking at two million dollars in radios throughout the county. Whether you break it up individually or you do it whole, it's still going to cost about the same. But if we upgrade and we want the state to follow along and upgrade with us. Anything? Thank you. Well. Let's hear your step. How how are things in Armstrong, crew?
Lovely.
We were there, weren't we, John?
Yes.
We appreciate your hospitality, by the way.
Rich, come with that. Uh, my budget's pretty much what I had last year, just adding a little bit to my my insurance. I got a little bit of increase on in case they. Decide to raise their rates. Other than that, everything's basic. Um, grand expenditures for upgrades, right, so.
And I did give your invoice. I sent it to Ruth. And um it should be taken care of by us. It'll either be.
Repair.
It'll either be uh, yeah, for your sewer issue that you had. It caused the way the levy language is written. It would like to come off the levy. So. Just to let you know where that runs. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Well, thank you. That was that was these. Okay, thanks. All right, you're next.
I'm Freddie.
Oh.
He's just a Freddie.
Who's next?
Last.
That's you. Tommy, how are you?
I'm good.
How are things in Nuttall?
I'm good. My only add, my only additure to my uh budget is pretty much other than inflation, pretty much the same, except for I did add a. Safe air breathing compressor. Our station does not have a compressor to fill up our SCBA bottles.
Talking about a cascade?
Cascade. But I've got bottles, I don't have any air in. Might be able to fill them.
Did did we not replace some and some have some cascade machine that we used the older ones and distributed throughout? Saying, did you get a a a different?
Another one? We did. I just don't understand why I have to deal with a used one. When the used one that was in that department, if it's good enough for me. Why is it not good enough for that department to keep me and get a new one since I didn't have one at all?
How how much does a cascade machine cost?
Uh, that exploding box will be about right at twenty thousand. And I've got uh, I've got some driveway maintenance on mine too, part lot maintenance, so if I don't have a paid part lot, I've got to grab my part lot.
If you tell Rick Lewis to stay off that gas when he pulled out.
If you tell Rick Lewis anything and he listens, you tell him, because I need to know how that happens.
Rick Lewis is a good man. Rick Lewis is a good man. We'll we'll. But you are too.
Yeah, but that uh that's pretty much only change in my my budget or additures to it.
Anything else?
What what is a cascade machine?
Our SCBA breathing air that we have, that you know, our mask and bottles, it's to fill them up. If I have.
Okay.
Fire and I have five or ten bottles come up empty, then I have to haul them somewhere to fill them up. And if it's two o'clock in the morning, I might have to take them to Ansted or Fed Field. And then the next day, I have to have somebody take a day off work. Hard enough to get somebody out to run a script, run a call, unless let's come grab bottles, take it to a different station, fill them up. They're just going to sit there till Monday night or whenever I can get them to somewhere to get them filled up.
Uh, SCBA is a acronym for self-contained breathing apparatus, and that's the pack you wear on your back. Y'all have Scott packs, correct? It's made by Scott. And it is contained with uh compressed air, not.
Right.
Not oxygen. Oxygen is bad in the fire. You get a little oxygen leak and you're a flame on, aren't you?
Yeah, you just can't fill these things with anything.
No, they they have to be specialized and they have to be, and that's how they refill their bottles. Do you have the uh metal bottles? Or do you have the fiber, fiber, the uh?
Or.
Graph- graphite.
SCBA.
For for your tanks, your oxygen tank. Are they metal or graphite?
They're graphite.
They're graphite.
Right, they're well, they're ruining them, graphite, yeah, right.
How many departments have those?
Positive.
Sorry?
I I was just asking if anybody knew, how many departments have those cascade machines?
All but two, I believe.
So that that'd be correct, all but two?
All but two?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they're.
When when they brought them last time, it was to have everybody would have one at the end of the thing.
Yeah. Well, it sounds to me like the two that don't have one should have one.
I agree.
That's why you're here.
That's why I'm here.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for letting us know.
Yep. Thanks. Kate, next? Nobody else? Oh, that one.
My budget pretty much stayed the same as it has. The several years, the only thing that's changed on mine was. Insurance, like you said, for case insurance costs comes up. Um. And. Looking at. We had a carport put up years ago. Um. Fifteen years ago, and looking at putting. A building there so that we can put our home inside trailer with our UTV. Um, I got one quote back. Came back at fourteen thousand nine thirty four concrete pad. So I was trying to see if I could get the concrete pad board out of state or out of levy funds and building it up with state funds. So. That's the only thing different about your budget.
But which fire department is speaking right now? I can't see anybody.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I apologize. Bye.
So outside of your regular budget.
Go ahead.
You have you have the insurance increase and then you said something about concrete pad?
Yeah, we're looking at putting an addition out beside our building. To house a. Main vehicle and UTV on a trailer. We had a carport. Put up several years ago, and it's not just, it's not sufficient anymore. So we're looking to to that additional to properly house our.
Have you gotten any? Um, do you have a design or anything like that? It.
It's gonna be a twenty four by fifty building. That's what this quote is for the concrete patch, twenty four by fifty. Said it was fourteen thousand nine hundred thirty dollars. Building. We've looked at a couple of different buildings and they're. Right at fifteen, like I said, that coming out of the state. I'm going to throw that extra building.
And the fourteen nine thirty is just for the concrete pad.
And that's what you were asking now of a levy?
How thick is the pad?
Five inches.
Ryan needs an analogy to put in there. Good deal.
Were you able to get three quotes for that concrete pad?
So I've gotten one back. I'm waiting on the other two.
Okay. And then are you going to need funding for a building to put on top of that pad?
It'll be coming out of state fund.
Okay, okay.
Are you going to put that on the right or left hand side?
Right.
Right. And uh. You guys had an interesting night the other night in Mount Hood. And plus all the flooding, everything else. Got chance, well, thank you. All right, next?
Thank you.
Okay, there's nobody else here. We've heard from one, two, three, four, five, six. So there better be ten people on Zoom that's going to talk. Who's first? Go ahead and pick somebody there.
Again, okay, there we go. Uh, you should have Chief Bell from Mount Hope.
Mount Hope, okay. Go ahead, chief. Mount Hope.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Our budget pretty much stayed the same. We. Had a couple add-ons, no major expenditures. Um, I'm kind of in the same boat as Pax. We were wanting to. Put a metal building in. And we're going to go the same route. If possible, I haven't gotten the bids because we haven't narrowed down the size of the building. But we're going to do the same thing as far as. Utilizing the levy funds if possible for. The concrete pad and we'll purchase the building out of state. If possible.
Now, Ren, where are you going to put that that pad at? I don't think there's any room on the sides. Are you going to put it in the back?
It's directly behind the station. We. Have the property from the back of our station all the way. Until it it runs adjacent with the uh Midtown Terrace Apartments. There's a section that's back there. And we're working now to get it cleared off and we're gonna put it back there.
Isn't there currently a storage building right there?
Yeah, that's a small one that we've. We've had. It was actually a used one that uh, whenever they did the uh flood buyout years ago. We got it from one of the residences that donated it and it's. Nowhere near big enough for what we need.
Anything else?
That'll be all.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Who's next?
Uh, Chief Myers.
Okay.
Chief Boomer, he's not able to, he doesn't have a phone at work.
We've already heard from Boomer. He's all right. He was just listening. He's just listening in. We've already heard from him.
I've got two phone numbers on here. I'm not sure who they are.
Chief who?
They're just phone numbers that I'm not sure who they are.
We don't, we don't want to read the phone numbers out, do we?
No, we don't want to read the phone numbers out. Okay. Hello?
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
This is Mike Gray, Ansted Fire Department.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, we have a. Increase in our budget this year because we need to put a roof on our building. And we've had leaks since since we moved in there actually. And if you know, that was an old body shop we turned into a fire station. So we have a sixty five thousand dollar ask on there for that. We're also trying to get grants uh this time for it, but if not, we're going to have to do something before fall hits this year.
Okay, if you can, if we're going to work to get three sealed bids for that roof?
We're working on it right now.
Okay, it it needs to go through the commission. And we will open them at a time that'll be listed on the ad.
Yeah, we'll we'll do the ad and everything. Once you have the specs.
That'll take a little bit of pressure.
I'll get that to you.
Okay, that'll take a little bit of pressure off of you. That way you can concentrate on the fires. We'll concentrate on the bids.
I'm a time with that. Long as it's done right.
Yes, sir. All right, what else?
And that's. That's all we've really got this year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chief Snethers, now Billy. Billy, can you hear us?
Billy?
I think, yeah, there, I think great.
I think, yeah, I think Mike just left and now we'll go to.
Yeah. Okay, who's the next chief?
Billy.
I have another phone number that I know.
Okay.
Okay, Billy should be able to.
All right, Billy?
Yes.
All right. You there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, what's the budget look like?
I didn't increase much from anything from last year. Um, my thing is that I'm in a, my fire station's at least sixty-five years old. Uh, I can't say that when or if I'm gonna have any problems with the rough or anything else, they just put, they just sealed it year before last because it was leaking and it seems like it'll do it every couple of years. It's done it ever like that ever since I've been on the fire department since eighty-four. Uh, and I don't know what the cost is because the city covered that part of it because Benny was the interim chief and the finances with the fire department at that time wasn't very good. So the city took that cost and they paid, they paid for it, but I don't know that the city would do that again.
Okay.
Um.
Billy's at Smithers.
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else?
I've got a uh truck payment that's due in a couple of months, other than that, that's my big biggest expense that'll be coming out of the levy money.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, who's next?
I think I have Chief Kincaid.
Chief Kincaid?
If you can hear us, you can hit star six on his keypad.
Uh Chief Kincaid, hit star six on your keypad and you can talk to us. Okay. Do you have any other numbers you can help him with? Any phone numbers where?
Uh, that was the only phone number.
Okay, is that actually the only one? Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We've heard from nine. We don't have one left, right? We have six here.
Matt Bridgeman's got a call right now, I think that's what I was trying to figure out too.
So they have a fire call?
So we all know, I I just wanna, since we're waiting for something, um, we all know that Armstrong Creek had some sewage issues because we were all there when when it started to back up. Um, what is gonna be the cost to fix those? Do we have any estimates yet? Like, what's it gonna take? Because it sounded to me like part of it was, you know, something localized and part of it was, you know, the PSD functionality in general because they do have that issue fairly regularly.
I received a bill from, go ahead, you want it?
Al Marino, which was eighteen hundred dollars, I had them come and try to clean it out, clean out parts of the thing. They couldn't. Play more than they were forty-five hundred dollars to break their jetty. And so, you know, Greg Tony, that's the PSD and they hired Steve Janetti. He kind of dug our sewer up, they did check valve, clean down in, brought his jetter up, they were sort of right now, and they, that was the only thing.
Okay, so Al Marino came in, it was an eighteen hundred dollar charge and I gave that receipt to Ruth. In order for them to come in and jet them out the rest away, it's gonna be forty-five hundred dollars more. The P.
It's already been taken care of, but Janetti and the PSD took care of it.
Okay, so the PSD did take care of it.
So it's only eighteen?
So it's just an eighteen hundred dollar charge, Allison, that's it.
I did pay for, I did pay for the check valves, the PSD, PSD bought the check valve, they were paying out that they installed, Steve Janetti installed. And how they asked me to pay was just for materials, it's four hundred and forty-two dollars on this one.
So it's gonna be around twenty-three hundred bucks total.
So we just, do we need, just need to put that through on the next vouchers and invoices or what?
Yes.
I'll repay the four forty-two PSD, that was the, that was the landing check.
Yeah, we'll put three-one vouchers and invoices for the announce. Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you both. Okay, um, we have some departments out on the call right now, they're not gonna be able to do that. And is that was Oak Hill that was out on the call?
Mountain Bridge.
Mountain Bridge, yeah. Mountain Bridge, okay. Do we have Oak Hill on, uh, uh, is Timmy, is Timmy Richardson?
I don't see him.
Zooming in?
Timmy said a doctor's appointment in Charleston this morning, I know that much.
Okay, all right. Um, Bailey's not on there for them? All right, um. Golly Bridge?
That's some Charlie Bridges who we're trying to.
Okay. All right.
My phone, Smithers.
All right, I guess while we're waiting here, let me, let me make a few comments on our fire departments in Fayette County. Guys, appreciate you guys. You know, we had terrible flooding, we had high winds, we had trees down, we had all kinds of things. I drove through packs. There that morning, I saw you there, you were pumping water, water out of the, out of the church basement and pumping it out and helping the community out. The uh the Weirwood property had flooded and you guys have properly marked, now I came in from one side, which is kinda south of you and it was not maintained, our Fayette County side, because that kinda separates us right there from that county and the other county, I'm not gonna mention the county's name. You guys have done your due diligence, I was, I was able to drive into that if I was, if I had so so inclined to do so, which I chose to turn around and go down the track to get to you and met you down there that day, well, I appreciate you getting out and seeing the problems and taking care of it for our public. You have properly blocked blocked off from your side, they couldn't get into it, floods were bad. So appreciate you, that that night, uh, eighteen people were saved in Mercer County by our Swiftwater Rescue Team. That's something we don't wanna do at any time, but yet when we have to be, do it, we we're available and they did such a tremendous job of saving eighteen people. Um, we had a car trapped in that Weirwood property, a person, three people with a a a female and maybe two children. You guys got them out and and um our nine-one-one director was able to get them to a church that they were able to house them for the night so that they were safe. Isn't that what fire department to do? Isn't that what you're supposed to do? I mean, you guys are following the program and I mean, and and you're going above and beyond. I I I know of a young man today sitting in this room that had a person die yesterday, passed away in a public venue, a great little venue, high school basketball tournament, died. And this man's alive today because of the actions of a fire department. That wasn't Fayette County Fire, it was another county fireman, but he works for another county uh department, but yet the actions taken save lives. What 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 do we put on that? What do the people of, uh, the taxpayers put on that, uh, that our fire departments do? That were your father that had a heart attack and was blue when you get there because of the, there's no oxygen circulating. And they do their, they do their thing and he's alive today, what's that, what's the value of that? Appreciate it, I just wanna say, our fire departments are recognized throughout the state as some of the best fire departments in the state of West Virginia and maybe I think they're checking on two more states, now do you kid, that's unofficial. But you're some of the best, appreciate you. I just wanna recognize you, publicly recognize you for what you do. I think that all of our first responders need to be recognized, including our law officers. That's true too, all of them have done a great job. So, um, nine-one-one personnel too, without them, there wouldn't be nobody answering calls. Um, so Ruth, let's get back to your exhibit list and finish that up since uh we only have two more things on that since we're waiting on chiefs.
It'll be next week.
Oh, yes, okay, um, because we've had a a busy Q three in the fiscal year or a busy Q one in the calendar year, um, I would uh make a motion to cancel our March the twenty-sixth meeting. No. Is that, is that possible to me? Yeah. Well, then.
Yeah.
The motion. I think we have a motion.
I was just gonna say, we usually do try to um knock out the last meeting of the month if we have finished budget in time and we did vote on the budget today. So um I agree with the motion too.
Okay, we have a motion and budget, I mean, a motion and budget, motion is second on the floor, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so yay, that meeting's canceled. I can't tell you, this is the first year that we started off with so many meetings and uh, you know, thank you.
This has been the worst one.
Thank you for the time. All right, next is the uh discussion and decision on the Cannleton Hollow temporary solutions letter and Commissioner Taylor, since you've been handling that.
So I finally got in touch with Terry Harland yesterday, I had reached out to her a couple of times last week, but she didn't see that I had called her, so when I followed up with her this week, we spoke about it, I had wanted to talk to her first because she's the one who organized the meeting that I attended that started this discussion. And and I wanted to see if she had any ideas for funding, but I'll break it down briefly. Um, the numbers I currently have, if if we were, so we need four pumps to do a temporary solution up Cannleton, if we were gonna do a comprehensive one. And we're also would need to treat the, further treat the waste coming from the prison, so there, those two components to the issue. Canal Falls PSD owns one pump, so we would need three more pumps. Um, if we were going to rent three more pumps, it would cost uh two hundred ninety-four thousand fourteen dollars and eighty-eight cents a year, and that's if we rented them. If we rented them, it would include all the maintenance and and deploying them and that sort of thing. There's another option for the pumps that is purchasing them. Um, if the pumps were purchased, we would still have to maintain them and then provide fuel for them. The the option that I would like us to pursue is to, and I haven't, I've mentioned this to you guys, but I haven't, because I wanted to talk to Terry first, made all my other calls yet, but I I wanna reach out to other PSDs first through Leslie Taylor and see if there are any pumps that can be borrowed. If anybody else has pumps that they could lend us or or rent us for less. Um, if not, I want to pitch um the state and maybe through the emergency um management office, maybe Dr. Means, or maybe he can tell me where to start, but I wanna pitch them to see if the state, some entity within the state, Homeland Security or disaster preparedness would be willing to purchase those three pumps and lend them to us. And I do think if that were to happen, based on the estimates on fuel and maintenance costs that Fayette County with the funds it has and sixty thousand dollars NRG RDA is willing to contribute to this project, um, would fund that for the two years that it would need to be up and running. Um, so that's where I am on it. Um, the letter was gonna be to go to whoever we think might have money, including uh the governor and others to ask for help to facilitate a temporary fix until either, you know, Canal Falls gets its FEMA money or if West Virginia American Water were to take it over, West Virginia American Water would affect the repairs. So what I'm asking now is just that we approve in concept a letter, sending a letter to the state entities that Terry and Leslie and I are able to identify, um, requesting um assistance with this fix, um, funds to contribute toward either pump rental or the willingness to purchase pumps for us and then, you know, lend them to us for the next two years.
Okay, Allison, is this just going to pump prison waste?
No, it it, so the pumps are gonna go in the areas of Cannleton Hollow where the breaks are. So it's gonna basically pump around the brakes. So they're gonna be laying pipe on top of the ground and pump waste um around the brakes, so there is no brake, basically to accommodate the four brakes. Is what the pumps are gonna do. So I guess it would pump prison waste as it comes down, you know, the hollow, but but it, you know, it's for everybody, it would accommodate all of the waste where the four brakes are.
Okay, and that two hundred ninety-four thousand oh fourteen eighty-eight, does that include the price of piping?
From what I have in front of me, yes. These all include the price of piping, the fuel is the additional expense, and then I also had an estimate for the chemicals from the prison, but then I got a uh a call from Joey yesterday that I haven't returned yet. Um, he wanted to give me an update, so he might have found some better deals on the prison chemicals to treat that waste before it even comes down. But all of it, I mean, you know by the sounds of these numbers, it's doable. I mean, between us and NRG RDA, we have almost two hundred thousand ourselves. And all we're doing is asking for somebody to pick up the other half of it. You know, and I don't think that's a lot to ask to to get these people some some relief.
Right, and and are you going to craft the letter?
Yes, I'm gonna craft the letter and I'll I'll send it around for comment. I just wanted, I don't have the recipients identified yet because we're we're trying to figure out to whom to direct it. And I haven't been able to have all those conversations because I wanted to talk to Terry first and that didn't happen until yesterday afternoon. And then um I wanna follow up with Leslie, I've already talked to her about it, but I wanna talk to her some more and just see if if there's anybody else who may have a pump that we can borrow or rent to see if, you know, we can patch a solution together. But I really think if we can, if we could get a good two hundred fifty thousand dollars from anybody or any group of people, we're gonna be able to do this.
Good. Um. So my my next question's gonna be, once you get your list of people together and you're gonna craft a letter, you'll also have all of your expenses in that letter?
You mean the breakdown of these
Yes.
Estimates, yeah, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put the options in, like I said, you know, I have the two options presented to me by Canal Falls, but I don't have the option in there about borrowing from other PSDs. I wanna ask Region Four to reach out to the other regions and see if anybody else owns these things. Or if anybody's interested in buying one and contributing, what Leslie, Leslie put something in the text there, hold on, let me see. She giving me some info. She said she had, she could not find another county PSD who had a spare pump to lend. Leslie, did you check outside of Region Four or just within Region Four?
I did not check outside of Region Four, I didn't wanna do that before you and I spoke again.
Okay, well, I'll call you after the meeting and and we can, we can come up with a plan. I I want Leslie and I to to vet those options too and and John, I may want you to call the PSC and ask a couple of questions also. Because this, this isn't a unique problem, West Virginia has floods, these PSDs have needs and brakes all the time where they're gonna need pumps. And if the state had additional pumps that it could lend to PSDs to help them get around these brakes while the fix is being affected, it would, it would make a huge difference for the citizens. And so that's, that's how I'm gonna pitch, you know, their involvement. The question is, who has the ability to, you know, to house them, you know, or to keep them when they're not being used?
That that would be a good question for Dr. Means.
I think so too, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna engage Jack on on reaching out to him. It's just, I'm, you know, I'm down here juggling and we had our other crisis I've been working on, so um you know, it's gonna take me a couple more days, but but what I, what I anticipate putting in the letter are, you know, we have the one issue where we need to treat the waste coming out of the prison, there's no doubt, we need to further treat that, so we're gonna have that estimate. And then we're gonna have the pump options. So we know at least we're gonna have buy pumps or rent pumps and what that's gonna cost. And then if we are able to cobble together, you know, loaner pumps from other PSDs outside of our and what that's going to cost. And then if we are able to cobble together, you know, loaner pumps from other PSDs outside of our region, we may, we may do that if we can get some interest or make some kind of deal with somebody who has them. Or PSDs who want pumps who may go in and split the cost with us or something. You know, I think, I think there are a bunch of things we could explore, but we just need more time. It's a pretty, you know, big issue to try to figure out. But I think the cost of it is, is not prohibitive, and that's the good news. I think between the money we have that the Health Department has waived for the clean water testing, the hundred thirty-seven thousand plus NRG RDA is going to throw in sixty thousand, and we haven't even, you know, we haven't even asked anybody else yet. We haven't even talked about what we might put in in addition to that. So, you know, I think, I think we have a, a workable solution. It's just a matter of how, you know, how we get the rest of the funding.
Okay, can you have the, the uh letter crafted by April second?
I should be able to. I mean, I'll be coming back from here.
Okay, I, I have a question and uh before we get into exploration of how we're going to pay for it, are we, I heard exposed sewage lines. Mr. Vernon, can I ask you a question? I mean, it, it with, can you draw upon your past knowledge? Is this the liability taken by the county? Is this something that the liability would, would be great? Or is this something permissible or acceptable from your past experiences?
You're going to be responsible for any breakage which would be considered a bypass under the Clean Water Act and Washington, Washington Water Control Act. But it applies kind of the same as in uh coal lines where they had to pump water for treatment, like acid water, you're still going to be responsible for any type of breakage.
Well, we have um DEP was involved in the group, the working group that Terry organized. So we're going to work with them about that because they're already, they're broken right now. I mean, there's sewage going into the creek right now. And they're fine with the amount of contamination going into the creek as it is.
Okay, uh that satisfies my question. Okay, then. I then, instead of the letter being voted on today, I will motion that we move this to April the second, uh once the crafted letter is being completed.
So that means we're not going to send anything out until the second. How, how long is that from you? Two weeks. That's probably fine. I'll second it.
Okay, have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor? Okay. Alright, did we have any other fire departments show up? Alright, then we had one other item that um we need to go into an uh emergency uh meeting mode. And we want to go into executive session to have a meeting with our attorneys for legal advice. And we'll go ahead and do that since we're waiting on fire chiefs. So I'll motion to go into executive session at uh ten thirty-six.
Second.
Allison, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, let's get started back up. Okay, um coming back out of the executive session, no decisions were made. At this point, we'll go back to our fire budgets and uh, do we have anybody else?
I had some people on the phone right as you all was going into executive session and.
Okay. Alright, well, we have, we have all their, we have all their budgets that were sent in to us, uh so we can take a look at those. We also, you guys had also put together a committee
Yeah.
that did some recommendations on some.
Yeah, so back in November at an association meeting, we asked for a committee to be on the engine replacement, like an engine replacement committee. Uh it was made up of uh chief, chief. And uh sent out a paper to all the departments if you was interested to fill out, and we got them back. It was six departments applied for an engine replacement. Committing there to down to three, we, we normally do five, uh we've done five. I think as long as way before May. Um but the price of trucks is, went through the roof since COVID. And there's no way we'd be able to do five, so we came up as, as the committee and, you know, picked three. And uh the three that we picked was Fayetteville, Mount Hope and Oak Hill. Uh based on looking at the trucks and the numbers that we asked for and uh I sent, I sent all your spreadsheet of it, so you all had all the information too. I know we had talked, you know, truck base trucks nowadays run yet, I mean, eight hundred thousands a you know, a not an elaborate truck by no means. Um they, you know, touch north of a million dollars easy. You know, compared to ten years ago, they was two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five thousand or so.
The other three fire departments that requested trucks?
The other three was Montgomery, Armstrong Creek and Danies.
Thank you.
So we was asking, you know, with these recommendations that, you know, out of what we allot, out of the levy every year, you know, we was trying to see if we could get six hundred thousand a year to be divided between the three for the four-year levy cycle to to pay on these, I mean, to make it feasible to buy these trucks. That would, that would come to eight hundred thousand per station.
So eight hundred thousand dollars, that buys you a base model truck. What if you want more? What if the department wants more on the truck?
I mean, it's, it's up to the department to come up with it. We, you know, it needs you know, we'd, we'd talked about it, but you know, they're going to have to come up with the, the upfront cost of over eight hundred thousand. Out of some other, you know, I mean, some other fund they got. It's how they've done it before in the past. But what we don't want is, you know, trucks, we don't want trucks being paid for for levy cycle into another levy cycle into another levy cycle. We want to try to, you know, that way at the end of this levy cycle, we can you know, have the debt paid off on the trucks that we got this levy cycle.
When you got, and you're, and you're, and you're uh the committee, did you have a majority vote to approve that?
Yeah, yeah.
A majority vote? What's going to be done with the trucks that they are?
The trucks that are being replaced is being asked to put at the new station like we talked about with Allison.
And that's station eighteen? What's the age of the trucks being replaced?
Uh Mount Hope's is an O-three, Fayetteville's is a two thousand and Oak Hill's is a two thousand and two.
So it's all right within that timeframe? What else do we have besides those trucks?
I'm curious to know about um Meadow Bridge's hundred and fifty thousand dollar floor that they need. Do you know anything about that?
I had, I had him on the phone right as you all was going into executive session. Um but I was down there two, three weeks ago doing some fit testing for him. And the floor, they had some water issues. They fixed the water issues, but the damage has been done and the floor's rotted out and the floor fell in half of their station. Uh they've got with uh New River Engineering just to come look at it. And they, their idea was to take the floor out because it's not very, it's not very deep, however you want to say it, but and fill it in with concrete. The, the foundation and the walls are fine. It was the floor joists that was bad, so they say. I mean, I'm not a contractor.
Okay, they're going to need to, they're going to need to, we're going to need to bid that out. They're going to need to scope it out and, and then we're going to have to bid it and see what the bids look like.
Yeah, I think New River was down there doing the community center and he went over and grabbed him just to come look at it. And that's, that's what he told me.
Well, I, I, I think if we can bid that out and get a good, good price, a good, good grasp on that and maybe help them out.
Yeah, that number it can, was just, you know, what New River, just ballparked him. That was what it was, maybe go across. I mean, that's not a bid or quote or nothing.
Right. So we have the three trucks going to Mount Hope, Fayetteville, Oak Hill. Uh they're all twenty plus years old. Uh if you want to get off the trucks paid off within the levy cycle. Okay, and anything past the eight hundred thousand dollars, it's up to each department to either transfer what's currently on the truck that they're going to send or to purchase new upgraded equipment. Thank you.
So uh I have a question on, what is the priority order on the three trucks if three trucks aren't possible? Cause there are a lot of extraordinary expenses. I mean, we have a, a station that needs a roof. We have a station that needs a floor. Um so just if, if, if there had to be a hit, like what are the top, you know, what's the order? For those new trucks?
I mean, I, on, on the spreadsheet you received, it's got a, the way we kind of ranked them.
Okay, hold on, let me find it.
Should have been emailed to you on March the second.
No, I have it. I have it printed.
Oh, no.
Right here.
That's, that's the budget, not the truck.
Okay, well, I have the truck spreadsheet too. You do send a lot of emails, Josh.
What date was that, Josh? March, you said March second?
Yep.
March second, I'll email it to you.
You don't know what's on the spreadsheet you sent us?
It would be, you know, Fayetteville come in at twenty, you know, twenty-two, the way we ranked it. And Mount Hope was, had twenty-three points and then Oak Hill was at twenty-five.
Okay, so it'd be Oak Hill, Mount Hope, then Fayetteville.
Lowest number wins on that. It's the other way, sorry.
Oh, it does? Okay. So Fayetteville, alright.
What would be the need of the trucks, Josh? Is what, I think we're trying to get, how they rank? I mean, are we looking at um replacement? Why would we need to replace now?
Well, I mean, I mean, to keep, if you, if you quit the replacement program, then, you know, in a short time, then you got to start replacing a whole bunch of trucks.
So what you're trying to say is?
I mean, we're trying to be, I mean, that's how we've always been, just trying to be preemptive and keep a good maintained fleet.
You're trying to be proactive rather than reactive. Cause the cost of these trucks are so expensive. But if you get into a buy.
Last truck I bought was three hundred forty thousand dollars. A year to the date, the same truck was five sixty.
Wow, two hundred grand. Okay, and plus we, you decided that also going, couldn't afford five, so that's why you went down to three.
Right.
So you reduced the number of trucks simply because of the.
I mean, we knew the levy wouldn't support it, so that was why.
Yes, okay. Any other questions on the trucks, Commissioner?
Not for me.
Okay, okay. What else? New Fire Department Training Center, okay. Let's um I think I, I sent the letter out that, that was agreed upon. So I'm just going to go down the list and let's check and off and see what else has been completed and what hasn't.
Well, there isn't a Fire Department Training Center, and I want to get away from using that language. Sorry to interrupt you, John. Um I saw it in the, in the budget submissions, but it's not, it's not a training center. It's a fire, a fire department.
We got to make sure we use the right words for the budget.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I mean, I just want to, you know, I want to distinguish for people who aren't watching every meeting that it's not what it was.
Okay, um number one's taken care of. Number two, A, identify chief board members must be different than the FCFA and service all of Fayette County. Has that been established?
Do, do we have?
Okay, so that one is it not?
I haven't seen the paperwork on the first one either. I haven't seen the five oh one C three paperwork.
Five oh one C three, yeah, we are registered with the state incorporated through the state. We have a federal I E number from our. I will see three, we need to do.
Okay, that, that is C. So let's go back to B. Um do you have your bylaws created?
We have a draft.
Okay. Alright, have you entered into the lease? Yeah, between the FCFA and the FCVFD for a dollar a year for ninety-nine years. Okay, so we do not have that one. Okay, so.
We could do a transferable lease. We could do a lease between the county commission and um the property owner and then the property, any property would still be owned by the county commission until the um Fire Department has stood up.
I think we're talking about the building, that one, the lease in the building.
Is Michael still here?
Yes, Michael's still here.
I'm just, I don't know why we're going through this list though, because this list needs to be complete before and we have to have all of the paperwork accompanying it before we get to a funding request thing. I've seen funding requests floating around to get New River started and, you know, there's a, there's an order here and we all agreed to it and it's, it's not complete.
Oh, I think, I think what you're doing, John's doing is, is making, just doing that data. And what we need, what we need to complete rather than just. And what, and what we need, what we need to complete rather than just leaving it after.
If you want a lease between for the. Buildings that are there.
As, Michael, can you help us with?
Yeah, so I. The, the way that I understand it is the uh. Fayette County Firemen's Association owns the land.
Right.
And so what we need is a lease from the Firemen's Association to the new fire department, permitting them to. Operate on the land, like a lease agreement, so then that, so you could do that now. Uh because it sounds like you've incorporated your uh new fire department with the state, so that you're a recognized business, and you know, recognizing, you have your E I N. Um all of that, so you have an existing entity, so you would just need a lease that permits the. Fayette County Fire Department Training Center to lease the properties and. Put buildings on it, run, you know, just a property. Yes, that, that's the lease, it would be between those two entities, and you could do that at any time now that you have an actual in, existing entity. Um you don't need your five oh one C three status to enter into the lease, you're a recognized entity by the state of West Virginia. Now, if you've been, you know, sent this up to the Secretary of State and all of that, so.
We have all worked out from this four, I would would see three, which we got that.
Yeah, it's a complicated process, and it's five oh one C three, so it may take a little bit of time, but you do have the existing entity, so you can enter into the lease. Just a property, standard property lease, that it doesn't need to be super complex. Between these two entities.
Are we, you're on the same page? All right, good deal.
We have a main third.
By, by looking at this quickly. Um. The. I have one question, did you already? Get all the fire departments to agree to tap into the levy funds to fund? The new station?
Yeah, I've got a signed letter from them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just say it.
Okay, so that one's done. Okay. Um.
We're gonna need a copy.
We, we, I believe we have one, um, and that was a.
We saw it, I know we saw it, did, did you get a copy of it?
I think they emailed it, yes, yeah. Yeah, we, that was a condition prior to the county commission voting. Um basically to accept this plan that they needed buy-in from all the fire departments, and there was a letter that was emailed. Um to us, uh indicating that buy-in was, um, all the fire departments were in agreement.
Okay, um and the plans are at the Fire Marshal's office now getting approved? Okay, so we're still waiting on that. So they're submitted and just waiting approval, okay.
That's the building plans, what about the, the piece where? Uh Chief Bailey recommended that you guys get with the Fire Marshal and the representatives from the auditors and treasurer's offices. To talk about the state funding component.
Don Don.
Don Don's on there, you got it.
Yes.
John John, you on? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I've already spoke to the Fire Marshal's office over that and uh. We can't really talk about that until we get the building up and our paperwork submitted to be a fire station. And then once the county or the fire commission approves that, uh that's when we will approach the treasurer's office.
I think they could approve it in concept, what all, what, what did they say?
That, well, well. They're not going to approve anything yet until we become a, a charter as a fire station, and they can't do that until we get a building up. As far as, you know, our state money.
Now, the, Mr. Uh Eastw, you said you have to have a building with heat and a fire truck in it.
Yes.
To be a fire department.
Yes, that is state code.
Okay. Okay, and Michael, you and I talked about that this morning, you want to let um the other two commissioners know?
Yeah, so I think, and, and I don't have the provisions in front of me, but I, I, I think that. We, you know, there, there may be a little bit of um. There, there may be a slight pickup in the process that we've outlined, where I think before you could make a funding request, you had to be recognized as a fire department. Um but the problem is that you uh can't be recognized as a fire department without the bill. All right, um and so um. We'll have to probably. Figure out some sort of like memorandum of understanding. Um. Or something that would be entered into between the Fayette County Commission and the fire, the new fire department. That basically indicates that um. If, if the county commission gives you the funds from the fire levy to build this building to become a recognized fire department. That if the, you all are ne- never recognized as a fire department, and we'll, we'll look at a time, we'll put a time, you know, within eighteen months or. We'll, we'll pick a time, you know, it won't be like two days, I mean, we'll, we'll look at the, the process and give you some time to do that, but if you don't meet that requirement by X dates. Then the fire department, if it's never recognized as a fire department, will have to return the money to the fire.
Well, so let me ask the fire chiefs who are there this. So I did notice in reading some of the other stuff when we were going over the reimbursement policy that there's a such thing as a substation. And it occurred to me that if we received flack from the Fire Marshal about. Creating a fire department proper, that we could probably cr- create a substation and, and, and handle it in that way, you guys have any thoughts on that?
As a substation, I can tell you this, if we were classified as a substation, whether it's Golly Bridge Fire Department, Anstead Fire Department, or whoever. Uh you will not receive any other state funds. So there's no increase in that whatsoever. So that would be a, a, you know, a negative shot with that.
Well, John John, what I'm saying is if they say no to the fire department, which means no state funds, if they can't get around declaring us a fire department without getting us state funds, and they don't want to give us state funds. Then is a substation the way we can go with regard to getting this. Stood up and understanding there would be no state funds?
I, yeah, I don't, I don't see the, the state turning us down once we get the building up and everything. Uh.
Okay, Chief Bailey seemed to have his doubts when, when Michael talked to him about. You know, be- because of the state funding, that, that they might not want to fund another fire department where we have coverage.
We, we were told um when we reached out to Chief uh Bailey, Robbie Bailey. When we were trying to work this out, just to make sure we understood the process, that. He felt that there may be hesitation by the state fire commission. To approve an additional fire department in Fayette County due to the fact that he. He believed that some of the fire commissioners believed that Fayette County was sufficiently covered. So that's why we put in that provision in, in the agreement that uh you all reach out to, you know, the state fire commission and, and Fire Marshal's office to make sure like. They're not going to hand you up on that. Um, you know, that, that's, so that, that's just kind of where we're coming from on that one, and I think what Commissioner Taylor's talking about is, and we'll probably bake this into the, into the. Agreement, any sort of M O U or agreement related to um funding of the building of this fire department. That in the event that you're not recognized as a fire department. And or a substation will give you the ability to, if you get denied as a. Fire state, as a standalone fire department, that you would still have the ability to try to become a substation without having to repay the fire levy funds. That, see what, see what we're saying here, trying to give you, in other words, we're trying to give you as many avenues as possible to not have to repay fire levy funds. And we, we're, the, the commission already voted and committed to.
They'll still carry out the mission, the bureaucratic setup is going to be, could be different.
Right, we don't want to, we, the commission has voted and, and, and they're supporting this fire station. Um while they, we want it to be an independent fire station because then it can house all, you know, all the things that we talked about in operators training center. We just want to put out that if you do get pushed back from the state on this, you need to be open and able to. Address that. Pivot, yeah.
It's just a contingency planning, in case something happens, now, I have a question, we say Golly Bridge, can Anstead be the sub, sub of Anstead?
Well, it's.
It would be up to the chief, I mean, they, they would have to work out, but that's something the fire association could keep in the back of its mind, and just in case we're turned down by the state. For this new fire department, I mean, I think they would, I don't think they would have a problem creating it if they could get around funding it. Um but if they can't get around funding it, they may not want to create it, and in that case, we would have to consider other options, and a substation came to my mind like in reading these other policies.
I will be at the state fire commission uh in two weeks. And, and I'll, I'll talk to them as I always do every meeting and keep you all in the loop.
Okay, cool. That'd be good.
Okay, so there's a few things that we need to get caught up on our list. Uh we recognize that there's some things that have to be changed. Because you, you can't have a fire department till you make a building and put a. Get heat and heat in it at least and, and have a fire truck, so we're going to have five, three fire trucks actually. Uh one from Mount Hope, one from Oak Hill, one from Fayetteville, tentatively.
I would have to go through my city back here.
Oh, okay, all right, um and uh. And we can go from there, one thing about it, the commission will need um copies of everything, the way you guys set it up. The uh, the list, who's going to be, or the board of directors, who's going to be the chief. Um just like with any other fire department. And we're uh going to need the. Um just everything that was on the list. That way we have everything checked off and then we can get started. Okay?
And after, I mean. We'll have Michael reach out to, who do you want Michael to reach out to about putting the lease or M O U together? He can't right now because he's working on another priority issue for us, but in the next few days, that ought to be. At least by the beginning of April, we ought to be in a position where he can work on that.
Yeah, he rolled his eyes on that one.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure, he's probably, he's very busy right now.
Okay, so work with John John McGinnis.
I'll connect y'all with the text.
Okay. All right, cool. Now, is there anything else, Commissioner Taylor?
No, sir.
Commissioner from that, I'm good, okay, uh Ms. Ruth? All right, then I'll, I'll motion that this meeting ends.
I second it.
Bye, everybody.